History is officially open. At this time, we're going to ask Attorney Douglas if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Following that, Reverend Mark Chumney will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, we come before you and we are reminded that in James you said, "If any lacks wisdom to ask you, and you would be free to give that to us." So, Lord, we ask for your wisdom to reign in this board meeting. God, we ask for your unity and your peace, God, to flow, and above all, we ask that your way would be done here in this life as it is in heaven. And, God, we pray all of this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, we want to thank those of you that are here in this meeting. At this time, our agenda calls for a presentation. Crescent City High School Weightlifting Team. We'll have the presentation by Dr. Shelby and Coach Stacy Cook.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. Thank you for having us here tonight. Here with me tonight, we're here to recognize Ashley Bennett, a senior at Crescent City High School. She is the daughter of Randy and Maria Bennett, and she is captain of our girls' weightlifting team for the last three years. Ashley has placed first in her weight class in our county for the last three years. As district, she's also placed first all four years.
Awesome.
In the regional competition, she was second from her freshman year all the way through to her junior year, and as a senior, she finally placed first. Winning regionals qualified her for the state, where she eventually traveled to Panama City, Florida for the state meet. In highlighting this, this is what's incredible to me. This is where she pulled off her third place in the state ranking overall, and it was her time to show 330 total pounds, her career best.
Awesome.
I think I've seen her in the paper, haven't I?
Yes, ma'am, you have. Deservedly so.
Yes.
Ashley said that she is blessed and humbled to be able to go and make it to the state and to come in third place, which is truly a blessing. It was an honor to represent Putnam County, South Putnam County, and Crescent City High School at the state level to bring home third-place win. Her goal is to finish out her senior year, then attend college to specialize as a surgical technician. Her final goal is to become a surgeon here in Putnam County to help to serve our community. She also wants to come back and help coach the Lady Raiders Girls Weightlifting. Joining Ashley tonight, we have our head coach, Coach Stacy Cook, Kaylee Parish, one of our other students as a senior, Randy Bennett, her sister, and Maria Bennett, her mother. We also just want to say congratulations to Ashley overall for a fantastic season and bringing home third place for her fans at Crescent City High School.
Woo! Well, Ashley. Yeah. I really love the color.
So, you know, we are satisfied for every opportunity we have in our athletic program to recognize students and board members. Thank you so much for having us come and join you tonight.
That's all the best part of the meeting.
She could probably pick Ms. Crawford up and get her out of here.
I don't know.
We want to get a picture of everyone here.
Yes.
And, Madam Chairman, do you want to come down and have your picture made with them?
No, I'll get next to my cousin. Coach Stacy's my cousin.
And also, Crescent City High, this is not the first time you've been in state competition this year. Of course, the football team and who else? Dr. Shelby?
Districts we were in for soccer with.
Right.
Yay! Oh, always happens.
Well, she looks like her mother.
They're twins. She's her sister.
I mean, her mama does. I've got some twin granddaughters.
Raiders.
Tell me what to do.
Congratulations. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Dr. Shelby. And while they're taking their seat, I just want to mention that Crescent City has what they call a Hall of Fame Wall, and let me tell you, it really stands out because the students are recognized for athletic feats and accomplishments, and people pay attention to that wall. I have two nephews that are on there for weightlifting, and anytime our family goes down, you better bet we go to the wall. And so, that's a great thing to recognize our children. We were talking about discipline earlier in a workshop, and this is one of the deterrents when we use what they are capable of doing, their abilities. And so, thank you again for representing us well, even though he says South Putnam, it's South Putnam, but it's all of us. The same water flows through all of us. Thank you. At this time, do we have any public comments? No cards, okay? Our consent agenda? Do we have any items to be pulled for discussion?
Madam Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, and we'll get a second, and then we can discuss.
Okay. All right. We have a second that we approve it.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Buckles and a second by Mrs. Crawford that we approve the agenda. All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye oppose, the same sign. Ayes have it. It's five-zero. So, is there nothing to be pulled? Am I correct?
Well, they didn't, nobody said.
Nobody pulled anything, so we're good to go. At this time, we are out of our regular session, and we go into our emergency session items. If you will look on your agenda, the first item here is an overnight trip for Palatka High School FFA to Tallahassee, Florida, February the 19th through the 20th, which is today. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve that overnight trip for Palatka High School FFA to Tallahassee.
I second.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Buckles and seconded by Mrs. Pickens that we accept this overnight trip, time-sensitive. All in favor? Let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye. And oppose, the same sign. All right. Motion carries, five-zero. Next item, under the emergency, amendment to agreement between GATs Aerospace Institute, Emory Riddles Aeronautics University, and Putnam County School District. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the amendment to agreement between GATs, Emory Riddle, and Putnam County School District.
I second it.
All right. It's been moved by Mrs. Crawford that we accept, and seconded by Mr. McInnis for the amendment of agreement between GATs, Emory Riddles, and the Putnam County School District. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye oppose? Motion carries, five-zero.
Could I ask the Superintendent a question about that real quick?
Yes.
Would that be Gates? Would it be any relation to none of the Gates that were?
Talking about with the legislature?
Yeah.
I am not aware of that. I know who you're talking about.
I wouldn't think they would be part of the aeronautics.
I wouldn't think so either.
Yeah. And the pronunciation is GATs. This is what she wrote for me, pronunciation.
It could be GATs.
Okay. So, all right. And that's why I called it GATs. But, okay. All righty. We are now out of emergency session, back into our regular agenda. Guess I need to turn my page, and that'll work.
Unfinished business.
Yes. Unfinished business. We are now going to continue our discussion to recognize employees with 20-plus years of service to the Putnam County School District. I'm trying to see if I see. Okay, I do see.
Mrs. Whitehurst is here and is going to have some information for you.
Bless you.
Okay, so as of about 30 minutes ago, we have over 330 employees with 20-plus years. However, what our schools and departments did not do was verify administrative, administrators, because, again, it's not pulling correctly. So, we're probably going to be right at 350 to 375 employees. So, as soon as you decide what you want to do, within the next couple of days, I will have the finalized list. We're very close. This has been a huge task to try to figure out, and, again, it's just one of those things that Skyward doesn't understand how to pull different types of employees into one, so we're having to do a lot of it by hand. So, I wanted to give you that number. You're looking at between 350, 375, and it's going to be spread out throughout, so I don't know.
Right, because what we want to do to celebrate that.
Correct.
We're going to see any somehow or another, have to figure out.
How to do.
Well, what part of the district they teach in, and that's a lot to ask.
And from my understanding, you were talking about all employees, not just instructional, correct?
Right.
Right. Because like if I approach someone, say my church.
Yeah.
To do something, you know, breakfast or whatever for the central area, I need to know how many.
Right, and we will have that broken down by the areas for you.
Oh, you will?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we will. Well, that's fine.
And we are in the sunshine, so we can discuss it, so we look like we possibly could have the central Putnam taken care of.
I haven't said anything yet, but I will tomorrow.
And if you want me to, I will go with you. I guess we'll be in the sunshine since we're in the sunshine now, and we just carry the sun with us.
Well, let me just ask the church cooks first, and then I'll.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Pickens, did you mention South Putnam? Now, I know Pastor Baker is always, always on board.
Right. I do believe that we could probably work something out through South Putnam, but I was thinking probably at the high school cafeteria is probably the, one of the biggest.
Okay. All right. And so, we can get with Dr. Shelby and iron that out, because he's nodding yes in agreement. I'm telling you, we have to show, I sound like a planning day, I believe, I'm looking,
it's the last.
Cafeteria requirements have changed since the Department of Homeland Security has been involved too, so it's not always easy to get into everything you need at a cafeteria.
Do you know that date?
My calendar's not pulling up.
Staff will do it for us. I had written it somewhere.
There is a planning date in March. I just can't tell you off the top of my head what day it is. I don't know if anybody has a calendar.
I wanted to say the 29th.
29th, okay. That's what I thought it was. Then my calendar's not pulling up. March 29th. I thought that's what it was, so. And that's the week after spring break, so, you know, it gives you a little bit of time there. So, just let us know what else we can do. I will continue finalizing that list, and we'll break it down by the regions so that you know, and then we'll get with you, give you those numbers.
Okay. And I do know in West Putnam, Brother Chris, he's not the pastor of First Baptist, but when I was working in that area, when we would go back to school the first of the year, they would always do a breakfast, so I'm sure.
I believe he is the pastor now. He's no longer the youth pastor.
He was a youth pastor, now he's.
Now, he's the senior pastor at that church now.
Wow!
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, we have a shoe in. Okay, so we could certainly get with him. I can meet with you if you want me to, or you can do it by yourself. I just don't want to say I'm delegating and not working, just running my mouth. I really want to help out if I can.
Get some money.
Okay. Get some money?
Yeah.
Okay.
HR's broke, just letting you know.
Hey, hey, listen. I'm not looking at a small department like HR. I'm looking at the lady.
Tanya.
I'm looking at the lady.
Do you know of any other districts that do this?
Not, I think some districts are trying to do some things for recognition, but coming from the board, I think this may be a first.
Twenty, yeah, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of out of what we normally would do, but, I mean, it would, it's something that we would probably have done through PFT years ago and a foundation, but we don't even have a foundation now since we lost Lift Putnam, so.
And I do, and I know that we're looking to honor those who have been with Putnam, just so, just to let you know, we do have people who have more than 20 years, but it's, they're bringing years in.
Right.
So, and I just want us to make sure that we're very clear.
And we appreciate them too.
Right, we appreciate them, and that's what, you know, I've said, is that the board is wanting to recognize those who have dedicated their years to Putnam.
Yes.
So, that's what we've been trying to push out there.
More than likely, you know, Jane is a child prodigy. They may have taught her, so, you know, she started out early.
She was my teacher in third grade. She was pretty good.
Mrs. Whitehurst, thank you.
Yes.
All righty. Okay, so we'll continue to work on that. Mrs. Crawford did mention a pin, just, just something.
T-shirt.
That you could.
Get him a t-shirt. They can take wear to school.
Yeah, we'll talk about it. When we get to that point, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it, because we really want to do this. Okay. All right.
I'm just going to say that's only, that's only a month.
I know. I don't know how we're going to put it off.
Yes.
So, you know.
Even, even if we have to do it the first of the year, if they're hearing that we are concerned, that we want to do it, and so during pre-planning, I mean, I just want, and we want people to know that we appreciate you.
But I also don't want it rushed, because I want it to be.
Right, that's why I'm saying, so even if it's pre-planned.
Pre-planning would be a lot better than trying to squeeze it in with all the awards ceremonies.
But we're going to continue to iron out little details as we go.
Yeah, because.
Yes. I hear what you're saying.
We can do it during pre-planning, because we do Palatka High School during pre-planning.
Well, there's other people that.
Yeah, I know. But I know everybody who to ask.
Well, we may do the high school.
Maybe my parents. I'll ask my parents.
Yeah. Okay. All righty. Thank you so much. Okay. Reports? This time, we will start with Mrs. Crawford. If you will share, and we will.
Okay. I have several things I want to bring up. The first is that I was very excited to see that my former babysitter, who is a teacher at Palatka High School, Erin Mace, was selected as the first First Coast News Teacher of the Week last week. Erin teaches avid. She actually came from out of field to become a teacher, and she just has found her place. She's just amazing.
Is she on their Facebook? Is that on their Facebook?
She was.
It was on TV.
That clip did run on.
Yeah.
It was McNeil?
It is. I was looking at.
Oh, and her last name's McNeil. I've got Mace in here. That was her maiden name.
That's what I was going to tell you, McNeil.
I was looking at a photo.
And awesome. I was going to share it, but great.
Yeah. But anyway, she's just become not only an excellent teacher, she's also a very caring mentor to her students and goes out of the way to help them outside of the classroom. She had a student that, for some reason or another, didn't have any clothes, and she took it upon herself to reach out and, you know, get some things for this child to wear, so. I participated in the financial audit exit meeting, because something happened to the folks that were supposed to be there, and.
I wonder what?
I would like to commend Rhonda and Shannon. It was the smoothest meeting I've been to like that in a long time. We only had two, like teeny weeny weeny little things, and they've probably already fixed them. The amount of work that goes into that is unbelievable, and Shannon and Rhonda, thank you so much for making us our book squeaky clean and just perfect. Let me see. I'm hurrying.
No, I'm listening.
I also wanted to bring this up. I've enjoyed working with two of our former teachers in Putnam County, Angela Mills and Alice Fay Adams, along with our pre-K director, Lucy Smith. We're involved in the Baby Brain Builders Project and.
Lucy Brozki.
What I call her.
Smith.
Amazing. You're sticking to maiden, and that's okay.
Sorry. Lucy, Lucy Brozki. And we're working on writing a book that will be given to, as part of Baby Brain Builders, will be given to the parents of every baby that's born in Putnam community. And I'm hoping one day to get Angela back in and let her update us on what else is going on with that. I received in the mail, and I guess every school board member did, a newsletter from Becky Moats and her JFG students. We have three amazing JFG teachers at our three high schools in Put, I know we have four high schools, but Crescent City High School, Interlochen High School, and Palatka High School.
Comprehensive high schools.
Is that what you call them?
Yeah.
Comprehensive high schools. And what they do with their classes and the projects they do and, you know, helping these students stay motivated to graduate and working with them on a daily basis. I just would like to give a shout-out to those three teachers.
Name them.
Well, Brandy Falk, Faircloth.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Kelly. Yeah, Kelly Faircloth, I'm sorry. Which Missamore, Lindsey, Lindsey Missamore, and Rebecca Moats.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last thing, the Palatka High School Panthers, boys' basketball team, will play Thursday night. They're on the road to the Final Four again. If you want to see some exciting basketball, please come to the gym at 7:00. We're playing Santa Fe. I think, you know, we lost to them by one point, and it's one of those hard, like bring your digitalis with you games, but show support to the Panthers as they play Thursday night. That's it.
Mr. McInnis?
Last week, I attended Drug Court commencement ceremony, had two young men that went through the program. Very humbling experience. I've never did anything like that before, but I'm glad I went. Young man had some lofty goals. They want to get their GED first, and they have it in mind that they want to start their own business. And just introduced myself and shook their hands and wished them well on that. Had a lot of things going against them, but, you know, they made all the right choices at the right time, so hopefully we can convey that in our schools as well with our discipline that we will. Yes. I do want to not fail to mention Armin, our representative of Putnam County Spelling. The Spelling Bead tonight on Channel 4 at 8:00 PM, so we're going to wish him well.
And he's so darling.
And.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Mr. Buckles?
It's that time of year, there's, you hear the crack of bats and balls, softball, baseball, track whistles blowing, and I did attend a Palatka High School archery competition, I guess it was a state archery competition Saturday, and just so neat to see the kids out there and what they do, and I'll probably be headed back to Kentucky again this year to watch them with having a granddaughter that participates. And I just, to everyone, we had a workshop earlier on discipline, and we talked about how, how important, and it's a drag on regular education to have to have all these extracurricular things, but it does give a young person something that he might want to belong to, like band or acting or whatever it is, you know, public speaking. It's got everything. We try to do so much that I'm just really pleased with that, so we've got a lot of things going on and a lot of kids participating, and I wish them all well. I would like to thank Superintendent and staff for the discipline workshop we had today. We've scratched the surface, and having watched where we've come in the last year or two, it was just absolutely incredible to see that we can, there is no reason that any child that's expelled from Putnam County District Schools can't continue their education with the services that we will line them up with and provide if they choose to avail themselves of that opportunity. So, that was a really good thing to hear today. I would also like to mention that we lost a longtime teacher last week, Marge Bott passed away, and certainly she put in a lot of time, a lot of years with a lot of children and made a real impact in their lives, and we'll miss her. I would like to get Superintendent to remind, one more time, we talked about the group that will be presenting at the national conference the other day in a workshop.
Yeah, and I was going to mention that. Thanks for bringing that.
Will you just do that under your report?
Sure, yeah.
Because it's not often that, you hear people say things, but this is national recognition. This is taking things that are happening in our schools and being used as a model nationwide, and I think that it certainly deserves scrutiny and credit where credit deserves to be, so.
We'll have them come to our board meeting too.
All right. If you'll cover it, I'll pass my time on to Ms. Pickens.
Okay. First, we did have a discipline workshop, and, you know, we're not going to fix everything overnight, but I think becoming more aware and talking about it will really help us. And we have, we have some things in progress, so I feel good about that, and I'd really like to thank Randy Hedstrom. He's done an amazing job trying to positive reinforcement. I'd also like to give a shout-out to the principals in South Putnam, Dr. Shelby, Mr. Theobald, Mr. Adams. They put together a South Putnam Acceleration Night, and it wasn't well-attended, which was disappointing, but it was designed to show parents how the children can progress from the elementary school to the middle school to the high school in an advanced-type program. And I, you know, I mean, I've taught there all my life now, 36 years, but it, and so I felt like I knew a lot what was going on, but I didn't, and so it's a shame that more parents didn't take advantage of it, but hopefully they'll get their students into the programs. Friday night, we had the first annual Crescent City Alumni Baseball Game against our new Raiders, and there were 28 alumni, and they had a blast, and I think.
Who won?
Well, the younger folks won, but I think the alumni did score. I had to think it was a little bit hard for the high school pitcher to go against his coach and strike him out. That was probably a little difficult.
I like.
But I think we had 93, 1993 class representatives all the way up to last year's, and my son actually played, and he said it was just absolutely fantastic being back out on the field, and, you know, other sports were there. There was a couple of soccer guys saying, "We should do this too." So, it was a great fundraiser, but a great effort, great idea by Coach Ross. And I just want to say, we applauded Ashley for her third place, and that's an extremely great accomplishment, but if you really knew Ashley and knew what she went through when she was a sophomore, it's really honestly a miracle that she can walk. She about had her foot cut off with motor when she jumped in behind a boat, and so, so I just want to tell her that she, she, she's like a role model, and when, you know, you get down, I could see her rolling through the school with her foot on that little cart, and she never, she cheered with that boot on, and she played softball, and you could tell she was in pain running from the box to first base. And I just want to tell you, Ashley, that I admire the way that you took on that adversity, and you deserve every bit of the accolade you're getting.
Awesome.
And baseball and softball seasons start soon. Softball tonight, so.
Thank you. Okay. I just got a whole lot of thank yous. Mrs. Whitehurst, again, I want to personally thank you for everything you do in human resources, how you help us to recognize those people that go to me above and beyond, to stick with our children and 20-plus years, to Jonathan Hinke for that exceptional workshop last week, showing us the culture, because the culture of a school can make the difference of a failing school or a school that is succeeding, how he shared that information with us, and then the part with Mosley where the superintendent will go into details. Just so much compassion there, and a lot of times, it may look like we are top-heavy when we put people in different positions, but sometimes you can't have a person that's a jack-of-all-trades, because then you mask that nun. then you mask that none, but to have people in the right place, doing the right thing, make a difference, so we applaud him. To this school board, um, you are awesome, you rock, it's, it's just great not to say, casting any, you know, negative shadows on anything in the past, but I think we're moving in the right direction, just wanna say thank you to you. Mr. Motel, thank you for what you do, not just as the representative of our union, but your compassion for your teaching, and how you write in the thick of things, wanting to make a difference with discipline that Mr. Buckles brought up, so that our teachers can teach and get back to enjoying it. Thanks to, to Mrs. Oldham and, and Shannon for all that you do, uh, finances, we come to you, we beg, and you find a way to get it done, so that we can do the things that we need to do for our district, and for supporting our kids, what you just said about Ashley and the adversities, that young lady is gonna be a leader, and she will come back to Putnam County as a physician and do what she said, because we speak things that aren't as though they are, a great book said that, and I believe that you will do it. Supporting children makes the difference. I went to the Uli Crescent City Basketball Game, and the game was going kinda like some days ago, they'll score, we'll score, and et cetera, and sort of back and forth, and all of a sudden, the fans from Crescent City, the parents, the, the coaches, the, the uh, students, they got into it and started cheering for our boys, and they turned it around and started, I guess they must have scored about 12, 13 points before Uli knew what hit them, and a parent from Uli yelled out some profanity, "Coach, put all their so-and-so's on the bench," and you could see those kids from Uli become deflated, "We can't win like that, we have to be positive supporters of our children, even if they come in last, if they finish the race, that's what counts," and so I thank all of you for supporting them. Coaches, we can't pay you enough for what you do, your family is deprived of your time while you're breaking down films and working on things to get them to do what they need to do, but we, we want you to know that we appreciate you publicly, and we thank you for all you do at this time. Mr. Attorney?
On Friday, Judge Butright considered 21 truancy petitions, and I would like to thank Christie May and Amy Hood for all the work that they do to prepare and make the truancy program run as efficiently as it does. Christie has done a lot of work in securing outside grant money to help equip parents and families with tools that will help combat the truancy problems.
Awesome, cause we can't teach them if they're not there.
Right, so that, uh, the truancy program is going very well, also, I didn't know if you saw, but Representative Bobby Payne on Friday filed bills in the Florida House of Representatives, uh, one of which directly applies to the school district, so uh, we'll be looking with anticipation to see if that comes to fruition, and also, um, other bills for Putnam County as a whole, so uh, we'll keep you updated as, as soon as we learn more there.
Thank you so much.
After our board chair gave that inspiring message, it's kinda like, we're just an afterthought.
Yeah, really.
Hard act to follow, but uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, that was very inspirational.
They inspire you.
Yeah.
The folk out there.
Ready to go play some ball some more.
Yeah, yeah. Suit up, yeah.
I'm ready to go watch them play ball.
Yeah, I'm gonna watch them. Speaking of, um, the legislature and Representative Payne, you know, he is, he did file a, um, an action to, for us to get an appropriation for our Public Services Academy is what it was, and we're actually asking for $600,000, and we're matching that, we're, we're providing a match, but uh, again, that is to help establish a Public Service Academy, as well as um, establish pu, uh, advanced manufacturing at Interlochen High School, I mean, we've already started there, but this would have provided equipment for, uh, you know, Interlochen High School, like we have at Palacka High School, so we'll keep you updated on that. And we also just sent in the Senate application for that, so, you know, we were funded last year, $250,000, so we have a track record, so it's appropriate to mention, there is, we, we do have an emphasis on career and technical education in our county, you know, we're really focusing on that, I think y'all have focused on that.
Travis Hudson.
And, you know, and uh, other legislators, and I, I wanna read, if you'll allow me, read.
Yes, sir.
Short resolution from the governor, just to show you where the governor stands on this, and I think in his budget, he is really focusing funding on supporting our CTE programs across the state, so bear with me for just a minute, and this is um, Career and Technical Education Month in Florida, which is February, he says, "Whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas the efforts of career and technical educators, business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for careers that are forecasted to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade, and whereas career and technical education services as the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas career and technical education provides Floridians with career-focused technical skills through practical and meaningful experiences, and whereas more than 431,000 secondary job preparation students and 214,000 post-secondary career and technical education students in Florida engaged in this type of meaningful education, whereas secondary schools in all 67 school districts, all 28 Florida colleges, and 49 technical centers offer career and technical education courses, and whereas more than 517,000 secondary students are enrolled in one of over 2,000 registered career and professional education academies, and more than 17,000 of these students registered in career-themed courses, almost finished, whereas Florida students have earned over 123,000 industry certifications and over 40,000 digital tool certificates, whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills, providing career choices and potential career satisfaction. Now therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing Florida 2000, February 2019, as Career and Technical Education Month in Florida, signed the governor.
And, and because of that, uh, their dollars attached meaning, he, he sees this as a great thing, so every district will get some money.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
Oh, you wouldn't go that far?
But we are, we are, we're going after it.
But the likelihood of what he's talking about, that the governor, if it reaches his desk, it won't get vetoed, the likelihood of that.
That's, yeah.
If you don't ask, it shall not be given, so we're asking.
A book said that.
Right.
Yeah.
Let me add a couple of things, uh, thank you, Mr. Buckles, for bringing up about Mosley and our.
That's a big deal.
Workshop, uh, Learning Sciences International, and the Schultz Center, uh, presented information to you last week about our partnerships, and I'm very proud of that, and we can see that's coming fruition at Mosley. Mosley is a model school.
Yes.
And we're gonna see amazing things happen there this year, and those teachers have learned some teaching strategies that they will be able to share with their fellow teachers throughout the district, where we can sustain this type of instruction, and if it had not been for our board allowing us to partner with them, because they don't come free, by the way.
Yeah, we.
You know, we would not have that opportunity, but more than that, as Mr. Buckle said, the students at Mosley are the ones that are most benefiting, and they have actually organized a group of students called the Voices of Mosley. The Voices of Mosley, and they're actually gonna have these students go to the National Convention of Learning Sciences International in Orlando in June and actually present, and I'm gonna ask those students to come here and be recognized, because it's not every day that our students get recognized nationally.
Nationally.
Now statewide, we do, but nationally, that doesn't happen often, so we will definitely bring those before you.
And think of that experience, some of them probably, uh, may not have even been outside of Putnam County.
Right.
And now they'll get this opportunity, not just to go, but to stay in, in a motel, you just, yes, awesome.
It's a prime example of the paradox of grading a school, we've got a school that has a, a poor grade, but you have, you're, you're gonna send instruction, instructional leaders from that school to make presentations on what's so successful.
Yeah.
So it, it really, people nationally realize what's going on, but because of the way it's designed to fund, uh, fund charter schools, it, it just has a stake rating method.
I wanna urge each of you on the board, whatever time you can, to go and just walk to school, and um, if you haven't already.
Sarah G.
You just need to see what's going on, those kids own it, they work in small groups, you can see them interacting, and it will truly show you that education is really.
Yes.
Um, taking a great turn.
Okay.
Uh, last thing I wanna mention, this Saturday, Palacka High School's robotics team, who we've had here before, are competing for the state championship in robotics.
Whoa.
At the Prime Osborne Center in Jacksonville, so um, we, we, we plan on bringing them to our meeting, our next meeting, and honor them, but, you know, we have so many great things going on, Crescent City High.
You know it.
Today, and uh, next time we'll do Palacka High's robotics team, and basketball teams too, so a lot to be proud of in Putnam County.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, is there anything else to come before the board? If all hearts and minds are satisfied, this meeting is adjourned.